You can give me that test with that little ball between the dog and the boy. You have to see that ball in there, too.
I like the Wonderlic test they're doing there instead.
All right.
Y'all ready? Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's a great morning. It's good to see everyone. And we've, uh, we woke up this morning and the greatest thing that we can be thankful of is that we have an opportunity to always do something good. So, we don't take that lightly. But we do welcome everyone here, looking like all of us are family. This is a very good thing. I am calling the meeting in order. And this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Rock to lead us with the invocation that we can stand and I will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Pastor Rock.
Let's pray together. Daddy, Father, we come before you today, God, just thanking you for the gift of life. And as Eddie shared, God, we thank you for the opportunity today to wake up and to experience this day that you have blessed us with. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to gather with these folks here this morning, God, as we pray for this council, God, and to just be able to pray before this meeting, Lord. I thank you for this community and just allowing us to be a part of it, Lord. We do pray your blessings upon everyone here, everyone in our community, God, as these leaders set forth each day, God, to make choices, to better life here, to encourage people, to bring us together, Lord. I just pray for them and lift them up. We thank you for the gift of life and what you've done for us. Lord, may we always honor you in everything we do. We love you and thank you. It's in your name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thanks for the flag. Attention. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Rock. You're welcome to stay, but if you leave, it will not be held against. Thank you all so much. At this time, I'd like to call on the, what's that? Oh, Stephanie, just staying in the city manager to, as I've stated before, to give honor where honor is due to the people that have worked for five years or more, increments of five years. And as I stated, we can't say thank you enough. So, with that said, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, this is just something we do, the first council meeting of each month, just to publicly thank our employees for their service and dedication, kind of give it a personalization when they hit one of their five-year incremental anniversaries, just to publicly recognize them. So, we have Mike Patillo with the Engineering and Poli Works Department, 10 years of service.
Well, hey, it's been a privilege. It really has, and it's been a good 10 years of my life. And I've been told I have to do a few more. Thank y'all.
We hope you thank you. Thank you, Mike. Keep saying.
At our police department, we have Corporal Edwin Reese with five years of service.
All right, at least five years, huh? Did you say something? You gotta say something, man.
City manager to the council chief, I want to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to work for this great city. I've been here five years, and since I've been here, I've been able to see substantial growth, and I'm looking forward to what's coming in the future.
Let's go on to 25.
And the last, but certainly not least, we have Mr. Alfred Adams from the Police Department, 20 years of service.
Chief? Thank you all for the opportunity that it has been with Phoenix City. It's been a good team that I've worked with, and I appreciate it, and I hope to do a few more years more, but I'm looking forward to retirement.
Hey, Frida, wait a minute now. Now, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, I've been known to put my foot in my mouth all the time, but I thought you was gonna do something this since you used to be an airline steward, didn't you?
Oh, that's over with. I want to stay planted on the ground.
That's wrong. The law say, "And lower, I'll be with you." He ain't saying nothing about how that he feel. Thank you all so much. This is a great thing we do. You can't say thank you enough to people, and that's what we always try to do the first meeting of the month. Thank you all so much. With that being done on the city clerk council, I would like to ask for a motion for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for the May 14th work session, as well as the May 15th council meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Johnson. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also on the city clerk, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the call meeting minutes on the May 15th, appeal of condemnation that we had. Counselor, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of that call meeting, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on on the city council, counselor, at this time, are there any unfinished business? Okay, if not, we'll continue on the resolution on administrations. A is ratified Resolution 2018-146 in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and the city manager to sign the proposal with Hydro Engineering Solutions to perform an engineering design for stormwater management in Saddle Brook subdivision in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, the city has determined that original plan developed to resolve the drainage and flooding issue in 2013 and 2013 and 2201 Walker Court in Saddle Brook subdivision was going to be costly and had the potential to cause damage to the foundation of the two houses. And whereas, more viable solution to correct said drainage and flooding issue is to purchase and remove the house located at 2113 Walker Court and utilize the lot as a storm water management area. And whereas, Hydro Engineering Solutions, the division of Hydro LLC, submitted a proposal to perform an engineering design for said storm water management area in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the necessary documents to accept this proposal from Hydro Engineering Solutions to perform said design for an amount not to exceed $10,000. Past approved and adopted this 23rd day of May 2018, ratified this 5th day of June 2018.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to ratify this resolution. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to ratify the resolution.
Okay, motion, Ms. Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordy. Counsel, are there any questions, comment, or discussion? Okay, if not, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the administration is a public hearing and resolution in reference to authorizing a development agreement between the city of Phoenix City and Second Street of Phoenix City LLC, the property located at 2001 to 2037 US Highway 280. At this time, I would like to open it up and ask, at this time, point in time for a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the council in reference to this agreement, now's the time to do so. If there's not anyone, I am declaring this public hearing closed, and at this time, I'd like to call for the reading of the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the development agreement bound between the city of Phoenix City and Second Street of Phoenix City LLC and related matters, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City as follows. Section 1, bindings, the city council, known as the council, of the city of Phoenix City, known as the city, which is the governing body of the city, has found and ascertained and does hereby declare as follows. A, the council has heretofore cause to be published in the Columbus Ledger Inquirer, the newspaper having largest circulation in the city, in its edition of May the 24th, 2018, a notice to the public announcing the holding by the council of a public hearing beginning at 9:00 a.m. on June the 5th, 2018, for the purpose of receiving comments from interested citizens pursuant to the provisions of the Constitution and laws of the state of Alabama, including particularly Amendment Number 772 to the Constitution of Alabama of 1901 concerning the proposed authorization, execution, and delivery for and in the name and behalf of the city of a redevelopment reimbursement agreement, the development agreement. Attached hereto is Exhibit A, bound between the city and Second Street of Phoenix City LLC, an Alabama limited liability company, the developer, in which the city proposes to take the actions as set forth therein and as partially described below. B, the purpose of the project and the items set forth above is the promotion of the economic development of the city in accordance with the economic development goals and objectives of the city, the increase in tax revenues in and around the city, the increase in jobs in and around the city, and the improvement of the quality of life for the citizens in and around the city. C, any interested citizen appearing at the public hearing having given an opportunity to make comments to the council on the proposed project and the terms of the development agreement, and the council has considered such comments as may have been made with respect thereto. D, the public benefits sought to be achieved by the adoption of the development agreement are the construction and/or redevelopment of a retail facility located within the city, which is expected to generate additional tax revenue for the city, and the creation of additional full-time equivalent jobs in the city, many of which will be filled by residents of the city, and which will improve and enhance the overall aesthetics of the city, thereby promoting economic development within the city and enhancing the quality of life for citizens of the city. E, the purposes of Amendment 772 to the Constitution of Alabama, 1901, the developer is the business entity to whom or for whose benefit the city proposes to lend its credit or grant public funds or thing of value. F, the expenditure of public funds for the purpose specified in this resolution will serve a valid and sufficient public purpose, notwithstanding any identical benefit accruing to any private entity or entities. Section 2, approval. The council hereby approves the authorization, execution, and delivery for and in the name and behalf of the city of, A, the development agreement bound between the city and Second Street of Phoenix City LLC, an Alabama limited liability company, and the provisions set forth herein substantially the form and of substantially the content as the said development agreement and presented to and considered by the city council with such changes or additions thereto or deletions therfrom, as the mayor and city manager of the city executing such development. Agreement to which the city is a party signatory thereto shall approve, which approval shall be conclusively evidenced by their executing the development agreement as herein provided. B, the approval of the stated development agreement provided for herein is contingent upon and subject to the approval of all parties to the development agreement, and the said development agreement is approved in substantially the same form and substance of those presented to and considered by the city council. Section 3, authorization of related documents and actions. The mayor, the city manager, and the city clerk, and all other officers of the city and of the council are hereby authorized and directed to execute, deliver, seal, and attest such other agreements, undertakings, documents, and certificates, and to take such other actions on behalf of the city and the council, as may be necessary or desirable to consummate the execution and delivery of the development agreement and the undertakings of the city and the council set forth in the development agreement, and to carry out fully the transactions contemplated by this resolution, subject to the conditions set forth therein. Section 4, provisions of resolutions severable. The various provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable. In the event any provision thereof shall be held invalid or unenforceable by a court of competent jurisdiction, such holden shall not affect the validity or enforceability of any other portion of this resolution. Section 5, effective date. This resolution shall take effect upon its passage and adopted by the council. Past approved and adopted this 5th day of June 2018.
Get you a drink of water, man. Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Johnson. Any questions, comment, or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also on the administration, we have a public hearing and resolution in reference to the request to vacate a portion, 0.06 acres of the right-of-way of River Chase Drive. At this time, I would like to declare this as a public hearing, and if there's anyone that would like to address the council in reference of this request to vacate this property, now's the time to address the council. Okay? Since no one has stepped forward, we are closing this public hearing, and at this time, I would ask the clerk to proceed with the reading of the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, Michael S. Bowden, on behalf of RCA LLC, has filed a petition and declaration with the city of Phoenix City pursuant to Section 23-420 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, seeking thereby the vacation of a portion of right-of-way known as River Chase Drive, lying in Section 35 Township 18 North, Range 30 East, Phoenix City, Russell County, Alabama. And whereas, the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has determined that said petition and declaration are in conformity with and meet the requirements of the provisions of Section 33-420 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. And whereas, the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has determined that it is in the public's best interest that said right-of-way described be vacated, and that said right-of-way is not shown for future transportation plans. And whereas, the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has determined a vacation of right-of-way fee will be required not to exceed the fair market value of the land. Such fair market value shall be determined by the governing body of the municipality after a public hearing pursuant to Section 1149-6 Code of Alabama, 1975. And whereas, the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, is of the opinion that said petition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. The legal description follows that, and the area of the right-of-way to be vacated is 2,498 square feet. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the vacating of the public right-of-ways are subject to reversion rights, and that the mayor and city manager hereby authorized and directed to execute on behalf of the city of Phoenix City the necessary documents to convey the above-described right-of-ways to the adjacent property owners. Past approved and adopted this 5th day of June 2018.
Okay. Counsel member, we have heard the reading of the resolution. I would like to ask for a motion for approval, please. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Bailey. Any questions or comments, discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also on the administrations, there's a public hearing and resolution in reference to a request to vacate a portion, 0.02 acres of the right-of-way of River Chase Drive. Now's the time to declare this a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to come and address this council in reference to this request for vacation of this portion, now's the time to do so. Okay? Since no one else has stepped forward, at this time, I would like to declare this public hearing closed and ask for the reading of the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, Michael S. Bowden, on behalf of RCA LLC, has filed a petition and declaration with the city of Phoenix City pursuant to Section 23-420 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, seeking thereby the vacation of a portion of right-of-way known as River Chase Drive, lying in Section 35 Township 18 North, Range 30 East, Phoenix City, Alabama. And whereas, the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has determined that said petition and declaration are in conformity with and meet the requirements of the provisions of Section 23-420 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. And whereas, the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has determined that it is in the public's best interest that said right-of-way described to be vacated, and that said right-of-way is not shown for future transportation plans. And whereas, the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has determined a vacation of right-of-way fee will be required not to exceed the fair market value of the land. Such fair market value shall be determined by the governing body of the municipality after a public hearing pursuant to Section 1149-6 Code of Alabama, 1975. And whereas, the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, is of the opinion that said petition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows, and the legal description follows. The area of right-of-way to be vacated is 858 square feet. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the vacating of public right-of-ways are subject to reversion rights, and that the mayor and city manager hereby authorized and directed to execute on behalf of the city of Phoenix City the necessary documents to convey the above-described right-of-ways to the adjacent property owners. Past approved and adopted this 5th day of June 2018.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. May I ask for a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Ms. Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Counsel, are there any question, comments, or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, there's a resolution in reference to awarding a bid to OTI Incorporated to replace the roof of the digester number three at the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $265,000. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, is in need of replacing the roof on digester number three at its wastewater treatment plant. And whereas, the city has advertised for bids for replacement roof and received a bid from OTI Incorporated for $265,000. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby accepts the bid of $265,000 for the roof for digester number three at the Phoenix City wastewater treatment plant. Past approved and adopted this 5th day of June 2018.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Comments, question, or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, there's a resolution in reference to approving final settlement in the matter of Brenda Johnson Coley versus the city of Phoenix City, case number 57-DV-2017-900283.00 in an amount of $2,400. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept and approve of the final settlement in the matter of Brenda Johnson Coley versus the city of Phoenix City, case number 57-DV-2017-900283.00, in the amount of $2,400, and does further authorize payment thereof. Past approved and adopted this 5th day of June 2018.
Okay. Thank you. We've heard the resolution, counsel. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any question, comments, or discussion?
Just like to make one comment on this. This is not a settlement because any employee or anything in the city has done anything wrong. This stemmed from just where an automobile hit a place in one of the roads, did some damage to the car, and we unfortunately, you know, were responsible for the damage to the car. I just want everybody to realize that, you know, this is not an employee issue to where, you know, someone has done something wrong.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay, if not, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the administration is a resolution in reference to approving the final settlement in the matter of a claim filed by C.F. Floyd II, DMD, in an amount of $950. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept and approve of the final settlement in the matter of a claim filed by C.F. Floyd II, DMD, in the amount of $950, and does further authorize payment thereof. Past approved and adopted this 5th day of June 2018.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Ms. Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordy. Any question, comments, or discussion? Okay, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a resolution in reference to approving the final settlement in the matter of a claim filed by David and Deandre Smith in an amount of $229,900. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept and approve of the final settlement in the matter of a claim filed by David and Deandre Smith in the amount of $229,900 to purchase the property located at 2113 Walker Court, and does further authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign all necessary documents for the purchase and payment thereof. Past approved and adopted this 5th day of June 2018.
Okay. Counsel, we have heard the resolution. May I ask for a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any question, comments, or discussion?
Yeah, there again, I'd like to just say one thing on this. This has been an ongoing problem for 25, 30 years. This is not something that created overnight. It was just the way the development was done back in, what, probably around 1990?
Nineties.
Somewhere in that range. And there were some water inlets that shouldn't have been put in, and if they were put in, they needed to be designed differently. And of course, that area has grown on Somerville Road, so it's now even taking in more water than it's been. So, the only way to fix this problem and do away with this problem is to move this particular house, use that area to collect all the water, where the rest of the neighborhood will be fine, and do away with the problem that this council and nobody at the city at this time had anything to do with. It's just one of these things that we have to deal with, is fixing, you know, a problem or issue that, you know, stems from back in the day. And it's one of those things that now it's time for the city to have to step up and do something about. I just want all the people to understand that this is not something that we've done.
That's correct. Well, we are stepping up to the plate to fix it, as it has, as Mr. Bailey has stated. This has been a problem for our time, so we are trying to rectify it. I appreciate that, Councilman Bailey. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Now, I'd like to ask for the call of the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and the city manager to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Phoenix City Housing Authority to apply for a fiscal year 2018 Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, known as CNI Planning Grant. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, the city, and the City of Phoenix City Housing Authority, the housing authority, wish to cooperate together for the purpose of applying for fiscal year 2018 Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, CNI Planning Grant. And whereas the CNI Planning Grant funds would include the development of a transformation plan for the Frederick Douglass Homes Public Housing Communities and a larger CNI planning area. And whereas the housing authority shall serve as the lead applicant for the purposes of the CNI Planning Grant application, and the city shall serve as the co-applicant. And whereas the housing authority as lead applicant will commit $17,500 of its resources as matching funds towards the planning process, and the housing authority shall have the overall responsibility under the CNI Planning Grant to ensure that the planning project is carried out in compliance with all planning grant requirements. The housing authority shall determine the adequacy of performance under the project agreements and procurement contracts, and the housing authority shall submit documents to HUD as required for participation in the CNI Planning Grant program. And whereas the city as co-applicant shall have the overall responsibility under the CNI Planning Grant to serve as co-chair of the Planning Advising Committee and commits to working collaboratively throughout the entirety of the grant to develop a transformation plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement between the city and the housing authority as set out above. Passed, approved, and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
That happens.
Thank you.
For the first time, it won't be the last one. Counsel, we have heard the reading of the resolution. I would like to ask at this time for a motion to approve. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay. If not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also on the administration is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and the city manager to sign an intra-agency agreement with the Alabama Department of Human Resources. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City wishes to enter into an inter-agency agreement with the Alabama Department of Human Resources. And whereas the Alabama Department of Human Resources agrees to reimburse the city of all costs related to the renovation and building improvement project for the Russell County DHR facility in Phoenix City, and to reimburse the City of Phoenix City $54,000 previously spent for architectural services, and such costs shall be included as cost of the project. And whereas the City Council agrees the attached inter-agency agreement would be in the best interest of Phoenix City and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to sign the attached inter-agency agreement to have the Alabama Department of Human Resources to reimburse the City of Phoenix City for renovations, building improvements, and $54,000 for architectural services. Passed, approved, and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution, the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mrs. Johnson, that's a second, Mr. Gordy?
Second, Mr. Gordy.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay. If not, call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one on the administration is a resolution in reference to amending Resolution Number 2013-489 in reference to a tax abatement to JBL Laboratories Incorporated. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. This resolution is made this fifth day of June 2018 by the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, the granting authority to amend Resolution 2013-489, which granted tax abatements to JBL Laboratories Incorporated, the company. And whereas the company has announced plans for a major addition to their existing facility, the project located within the jurisdiction of the granting authority. And whereas the project was estimated to be completed by the first day of May 2014. And whereas the project was granted a time extension by the Alabama Department of Revenue through the first day of September 2014. And whereas the project was not fully complete and placed into service until the first day of December 2016. And whereas the City Council would like to extend the completion and placed into service dates to the first day of December 2016. And whereas pursuant to the Tax Incentive Reform Act of 1992, Section 49B-1 Code of Alabama 1975, the Act, the company has requested from the granting authority an abatement of all state and local noneducational property taxes and all construction-related transaction taxes, except those local construction-related taxes levied for educational purposes or for capital improvements or education. And whereas the company has requested that the abatement of state and local noneducational property taxes, if applicable, be extended for a period of 10 years in accordance with the Act. And whereas the granting authority has considered the request of the company and the completed applications filed with the granting authority by the company in connection with its request. And whereas the granting authority has found the information contained in the company's application to be sufficient to permit the granting authority to make a reasonable cost-benefit analysis of the proposed project and determine the economic benefits to the community. And whereas the construction of the project involved an estimated capital investment of $3,500,000. And whereas the company is duly qualified to do business in the state of Alabama and has powers to enter into and to perform and observe the agreements and covenants on its part contained in the tax abatement agreement. And whereas the granting authority represents and warrants to the company that it has power under that constitution and laws of the state of Alabama, including particularly the provisions of the Act, to carry out the provisions of the tax abatement agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the granting authority as follows. Section 1, approval is hereby given to the application of the company, and abatement is hereby granted of all state and local noneducational property taxes and all construction-related transaction taxes, except those local construction-related transaction taxes levied for educational purposes or for capital improvements for education. And as the same may apply to the fullest extent permitted by the Act, the period of abatement for the noneducational property taxes shall extend for a period of 10 years measured as provided in Section 49B-3A12 of the Act. Section 2, the governing body of the granting authority is authorized to enter into an abatement agreement for the company to provide for the abatement granted in Section 1. Section 3, a certified copy of this resolution with the application and abatement agreement shall be forwarded to the company to deliver to the appropriate local taxing authorities and to the Alabama Department of Revenue in accordance with the Act. Section 4, the governing body of the granting authority is authorized to take any and all actions necessary or desirable to accomplish the purpose of the foregoing of this resolution. Passed, approved, and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. You've had some long ones today.
I have.
Get your win. Get your win. Counsel, we have heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay. If not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now on the Building Department, we have a public hearing and approval of five resolutions in reference to the fixing of costs incurred by the City of Phoenix City for the removal of substandard structures and the establishment of special assessments upon properties located at 1904 Fourteenth Avenue in an amount of $7,571.90, 1208 Eighteenth Avenue in an amount of $6,005.92, 1203 Knolls Road in an amount of $4,862.74, 2905 South Railroad Street in an amount of $3,983.32, and 3 Trafford Trail, $6,469.83. At this time, it is the time now to declare this as a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come and address the council in reference to these properties, in reference to fixing of costs and assessment, now is the time to do so. Okay? No one stepped forward, I am declaring this public hearing closed. And with that said, counsel, I would ask the clerk to read one master resolutions, and we will just take all of those in one setting, okay?
Okay.
With that said, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, was requested by the building official of the city to authorize the demolition and removal of substandard structures at the following locations in Phoenix City. 1904 Fourteenth Avenue, 1208 Eighteenth Avenue, 1203 Knolls Road, 2905 South Railroad Street, 3 Trafford Trail. Whereas the City Council on the first day of May 2018 by Resolution Number 2018-126, and by Resolution Number 2018-127, and by Resolution Number 2018-128, and by Resolution Number 2018-129, and by Resolution Number 2018-130, approved the apparent low bid to demolish and/or remove said substandard structures located on each property listed above. And whereas the city has given notice by certified or registered mail to the person or persons last assessed for ad valorem taxes for each property, and a notice has been published in the Citizen of East Alabama, a local newspaper of general circulation, at least 15 days before this final hearing for the fixing of costs for each property. And whereas, after giving all interested parties an opportunity at this public hearing to address counsel on this the fifth day of June on the issue of the fixing of costs in these cases, the City Council believes the fixing of costs have been determined and that they should be assessed against the substandard structures as named above and recorded in the probate office to protect the interest of the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows, that the final cost in the removal of substandard structures at the following locations are as follows. 1904 Fourteenth Avenue, $7,571.90, 1208 Eighteenth Avenue, $6,005.92, excuse me, 1203 Knolls Road, $4,862.74, 2905 South Railroad Street, $3,983.32, 3 Trafford Trail, $6,469.83. That the city clerk file a certified copy of each resolution with the probate judge of Russell County, Alabama, and the probate judge of Lee County, Alabama, to establish a special assessment that shall constitute a lien of Phoenix City, Alabama, upon each property that shall be collected through the Revenue Commissioner's Office for Russell County, Alabama, and the Revenue Commissioner's Office for Lee County. Three, that the legal description for each property is listed on each individual resolution for that particular property as taken from the records of the Revenue Commissioner's Office of Russell County and Lee County, Alabama. That the property owners listed below for each property are as shown on the tax records of Russell and Lee County, Alabama. Number 1, 1904 Fourteenth Avenue is the State of Alabama, State Capitol Building, Montgomery, Alabama, 36104. Number 2, 1208 Eighteenth Avenue, Keldrick Hefflin, 561, Heatherford Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31907. Number 3, 1203 Knolls Road, State of Alabama, State Capitol Building, Montgomery, Alabama, 36104. Number 4, 2905 South Railroad Street, Yvonne R. Short, 93, Lee Road, 399, Smith Station, Alabama, 36877. Number 5, 3 Trafford Trail, Jason M. and Belita J. Robinson, 3 Trafford Trail, Phoenix City, Alabama, 36870. Passed, approved, and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. You okay?
Good.
Counsel, we have heard the reading of the master resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
All right. Second, Mr. Bailey. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Mayor, can we check? Someone walked in, just want to make sure that they're not part of one of these properties for the public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Stigman? That's right. Do you would like to address the council?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make sure.
Okay. No questions, comments, or discussion. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on, on the Building Department, we have five resolutions and public notices in reference to setting public hearing dates and fixing demolition costs associated with the following properties located in Phoenix City. 1119 Twenty-third Avenue, 1233 Thirteenth Avenue, 2306 Sixteenth Place, 518 Sixth Street, and 1605 Twenty-second Street. At this time, counsel, I would ask that the clerk would read one master resolution, and as well as the public notice. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been informed by the building official of the city that substandard structures at the following locations in Phoenix City were in need of demolition or removal. 1119 Twenty-third Avenue, 1233 Thirteenth Avenue, 2306 Sixteenth Place, 518 Sixth Street, 1605 Twenty-second Street. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has solicited sealed bids as required by Alabama law, and the apparent low bidder is meeting the specifications required for the demolition of the substandard structures are as follows. The amount listed below includes dumping fees. 1119 Twenty-third Avenue, J&amp;J Land Development Incorporated, $4,426.20, 1233 Thirteenth Avenue, Stewart Contracting, $4,619.59, 2306 Sixteenth Place, J&amp;J Land Development Incorporated, $5,571.95, 518 Sixth Street, J&amp;J Land Development Incorporated, $9,244.73, 1605 Twenty-second Street, J&amp;J Land Development Incorporated, $5,141.25. Whereas the city is required by law to give notice by certified or registered mail to the person last assessed for ad valorem taxes before the final fixing of cost, and a copy of the resolution is to be published in the Citizen of East Alabama, a newspaper of local and general publication in Russell County, Alabama. And whereas the building official of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, was authorized to proceed with a demolition and/or removal of the substandard structure with the apparent low bidder at the approved bid price. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. One, that the city clerk give notice by certified or registered mail to the person last assessed for ad valorem taxes, and a copy of this resolution be published in the Citizen of East Alabama newspaper, one time before the final fixing of cost and establishment of a special assessment upon the property as required by law. Two, that the date for fixing of costs before the city council shall be July 3, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in the council chambers at City Hall. Three, that at such public hearing, any person interested in this property, as well as the person last assessed for ad valorem taxes, should appear and give reason, if any, why the city council should not establish a special assessment upon the property for the cost the City Council should not establish a special assessment upon the property for the cost of the demolition or removal of the substandard structure which the owner of the property had either failed or refused to do after it had become a public danger or health hazard. Four, the cost of demolition for each structure listed above shall be levied against each property as a special assessment and shall constitute a lien against the property to be collected through the Revenue Commissioner's Office for Russell County, Alabama. The council notes that the parcel identification number for each property is listed on the public notice and the individual resolution for each property. Five, that the property owner shown on the tax records of Russell County, Alabama for each property is as follows: 1119 23rd Avenue, Walter and Virginia Osby, Attention Mary Robinson, 10129 Stoneley Drive, Benbrook, Texas, 76126; 1233 13th Avenue, Thomas D. Roscoe; 1233 13th Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, 36867; 2306 16th Place, State of Alabama State Capitol Building, Montgomery, Alabama, 36104; 518 6th Street, State of Alabama State Capitol Building, Montgomery, Alabama, 36104; 1605 22nd Street, Michael Wayne Ladner, Cheryl M. Ladner, 1512 22nd Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, 36867, passed through and adopted this fifth day of June 2018. Then the public notice reads as follows: Public notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on July the 3rd, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in the Council Chambers, 1111 Broad Street, to consider the fixing of cost incurred by the City of Phoenix City for the demolition and/or removal of substandard buildings or structures at the following locations: 1119 23rd Avenue, 1233 13th Avenue, 2306 16th Place, 518 6th Street, 1605 22nd Street. Any person from or corporation having any interest in the above described property should appear before council at aforementioned time and place if they have any problems as to why the fixing of cost for the removal of the substandard building or structure should not be assessed as a lien against the property taxes upon which a substandard building or structure was located. This the fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the master resolution as well as the public notice. At this time I'd like to call for a motion to approve the public notices as well as the resolution. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mrs. Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordon. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the Engineering Department and Public Works, we have a resolution in reference to taking over paying the monthly electric bill for four traffic lights located in US-80 Off-Ramp and River Chase Drive. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will take over paying the monthly electric service to Alabama Power Company for the following traffic lights as follows: For HPS cut-off Cobra traffic lights at the intersection of US-80 Off-Ramp and River Chase Drive, passed through and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any comments, questions, discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also on the Engineers Department and Public Works, we have a resolution in reference to purchasing 1 2019 HV607 SBA 4x2 packer rear loader trash truck from Southland International Trucks in an amount not to exceed $138,351.98. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas under the Alabama bid law for public contracts, municipalities can purchase property under a state bid provided that the state bid so provides. And whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase the property herein af- herein after described on state bid for the Limbs and Debris Division in the Engineering Public Works Department, excuse me, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that 1 2019, excuse me, HV607 SBA 4x2 packer rear loader trash truck shall be purchased under state contract MA-999-T193-4012908, commodity number 07206, line number 59 through 61, from Southland International Trucks in the amount of $138,351.98, passed through and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. Just drink a water, get in.
All that ready?
Let it break. Counsel, we've, uh, we've heard the reading of the resolution. This time I'd like to ask for a motion to approve, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay? Matt? You all right?
Yeah, I'm good.
Call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the Parks and Recreation, we have a resolution in reference to rescinding Resolution Number 2018-145 in reference to Pyrotechnico for fireworks on July the 4th, 2018, at the Amphitheater. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that Resolution Number 2018-145, adopted and approved May the 15th, 2018, in reference to Pyrotechnico for fireworks on July the 4th, 2018, for the Parks and Recreation is hereby rescinded, passed through and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. May I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mrs. Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordon. Comments, questions, discussion? Just let everybody know, we're not calling off the fireworks show now. Now, we, we getting it right for our documentation, which, uh, they do a very good job of documentation, so we're not calling it off.
That's right.
We get enough email, texts, and voicemails as it is, and so make sure we're not cutting, cutting it off. Okay? Any other questions, comment? Matt, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also on the Parks and Recs, this is where we're getting it correct, there's a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract with Pyrotechnico for fireworks on July the 4th, 2018, at the Amphitheater in an amount not to exceed $10,750. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens, and whereas the City of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with Pyrotechnico for fireworks at Amphitheater, July the 4th, 2018, at the annual Fourth of July celebration, and whereas the City of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of $10,750, split into two equal parts, with the first part to be paid up front as a deposit of $5,375 and $5,375 to be paid upon completion of the fireworks display. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city managers, authorized and officials, are hereby authorized and directed to sign the contract with Pyrotechnico for fireworks on July the 4th, 2018, at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, passed through and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Comments, questions, discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the ordinance, we have an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's limited obligation special commercial facilities revenue warrant, Series 2018B, development agreement between the City of Phoenix City and Second Street of Phoenix City, LLC. Uh, at this time I'd like to ask the clerk to proceed with the first reading. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's limited obligation special commercial facilities revenue warrant, Series 2018B, with regard to the development agreement binding between the City of Phoenix City and Second Street of Phoenix City, LLC, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, the city, as follows: One, the city does hereby approve, adopt, ratify, authorize, and confirm the following documents: A, the redevelopment reimbursement agreement, the development agreement, binding between the city and Second Street of Phoenix City, LLC, and Alabama Limited Liability Company, the developer; and B, the form and issuance of the city's limited obligation special commercial facilities revenue warrant, Series 2018B, the warrant, which is attached as an exhibit to the development agreement. Two, the documents described in Section 1 of this ordinance, herein collectively the financing documents, are approved in substantially the form and of substantially the content as the financing documents presented to and considered by the City Council. With such changes or additions thereto or deletions therewith, as the mayor and city manager of the city executing those of the financing documents to which the city is a party signatory thereto shall approve, which approval shall be conclusively evidenced by their executing the financing documents as herein after provided. Three, the financing documents presented to, considered, and adopted by the City Council shall be filed in the permanent records of the city. Four, the city desires, before the issuance of the limited obligation special commercial facilities revenue warrant, Series 2018B, described in the financing documents, to validate the legality of all proceedings had or taken in connection therewith, the validity of the means provided for the payment of the limited obligation special commercial facilities revenue warrant, Series 2018B, and validity of all covenants and provisions contained in the ordinance and order authorizing issuance of the limited obligation special commercial facilities revenue warrant, Series 2018B, by filing a complaint against the taxpayers and citizens of the City of Phoenix City in the Circuit Court of Russell County, Alabama. A complaint to validate such limited obligation special commercial facilities revenue warrant, Series 2018B, the financing documents, proceedings, and covenants shall be filed and validation proceedings shall be instituted in the name of the city and the members of the governing body of the city. Maynard Cooper Gale P.C. is hereby designated and appointed as the attorney of the city to file such complaint, institute such proceedings, and to take all steps necessary to complete such validation proceedings in accordance with the provisions of applicable law. Any actions heretofore taken by such attorneys in connection with the filing of such complaint or such validation proceedings are hereby ratified and confirmed. Five, subject to successful resolution and validation proceedings, the mayor and the city manager hereby authorized and directed to execute, acknowledge, and deliver the financing documents for and on behalf of and in the name of the city. The city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to attest the same. The certification of registration of the limited obligation commercial facilities revenue warrant, Series 2018B, as a claim against the warrant fund, under such warrant, shall be executed by the director of finance of the city. Any prior execution of the financing documents by any of the aforementioned officers is hereby ratified and confirmed. Six, the mayor, the city manager, the city clerk, and the director of finance, or any of them, are hereby authorized and directed to execute, deliver, file, and record such related financing documents and security agreements and notices thereof as may be necessary or desirable to carry out the provisions of this ordinance. Seven, any prior actions taken or documents executed by any officers of the city in connection with the financing documents and the transactions herein authorized and approved are hereby ratified and confirmed. Eight, the city does hereby approve, adopt, ratify, and confirm the seal impressed on these minutes as, and for, the official corporate seal of the city, and said seal shall remain in the custody of the city clerk who is hereby authorized to affix his thing to bonds, contracts, proceedings, and other documents of the city, passed through and adopted this fifth day of June 2018.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the first reading. Uh, at this time I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the board appointments. Under the Housing Abatement Board, we do have one opening. Uh, at this time, I, uh, we are going to ask for a motion to table, uh, this because, uh, as I stated before, we have different levels of board. Level one constitute a interview, level two does not. In this case, the Housing Abatement Board, this is under the, uh, Mrs. Johnson?
Right.
The one who nominates this person. We've had a person that was, uh, we were supposed to have interviewed, uh, three different times. Uh...
That's different board.
Oh, yeah, that's the, uh, yeah, that's right.
Mrs. Johnson.
But we are tabling the, the one for the Housing Abatement Board due to the fact that we do not have a name that has been turned in. Okay? So I'd like to ask for a motion to, to table.
Motion to table.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, also, uh, board appointments under the Industrial Development Board, we do have two openings. At this time, counsel, I am going to ask and open it up for any nominations. Are there any nominees at this time?
I'd like to nominate Terry Brooks to be reappointed to her, her position.
Okay. Uh, since this is a reappointment, we're not going to ask, are there any other nominations? I am going to close this one and ask for a motion to approve the reappointment of Terry Brooks. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Bailey, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay? Mrs.? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, uh, with another, uh, opening, uh, counsel, at this time I'd like to open it up for any nominations. Are there any other nominees at this time for the Industrial Development Board?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Eli Brown.
Okay. Are there any others? All right, so if there's not any other, we would like to close this nomination. And at this time, counsel, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Eli Brown.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also on the tree commission, we have one opening. Uh, we previously tabled that, counsel. At this time I'd like to open it up for any nominations. At this time, are there any nominees, counsel?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Pamela Stroud.
Okay. We have one nomination, are there any others, counsel? Since there's not, I am closing the nomination, and at this time I'd like to call for a motion to appoint Mrs. Pamela Stroud.
Motion to approve appointment.
All right, motion by Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. At this time I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the zoning and adjustment of the appeals board. Uh, this is the one that falls under the district two, Mrs. Johnson. And at this time, uh, we are going to...
This is the one where...
This is the one that they hadn't shown up.
They hadn't shown up.
That's right, that's...
Yeah.
That's, that's the, uh, this is, well, I'm not going to call his name.
Don't know his name, yeah, that's...
We, we have decided to, uh, to, uh, table this one. Again, the person that, uh, name was turned in, he's had three opportunities to come and interview, this is a level one board. Since that person has not shown up, we are moving on. Uh, we're not going to, uh, afford that person the opportunity again. And so with that said, uh, we are going to request that we table this one.
Motion to table.
All right, motion by Mr. Uh, Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Gordy, for reminding me of that. Next on itemized statement of expenses on the fire department, uh, we have three individuals. Uh, first person is McKinley Bass in the amount of $44.66, as well as in an amount of $40.73, also in an amount of $28.11, for a total on McKinley Bass, for a total of $113.50. So counsel, at this time I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the sum, of the total of $113.50 for the expenses on the McKinley Bass. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, uh, Mrs. Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. And also, we have three line item expense for Brent Paul in the amount of $44.74, another amount of $44.69, and also a final expense under Brent Paul for a total of $27.63, which brings a sum total to $117.6. And so with that said, counsel, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the total sum of $117.6 for Mr. Brent Paul.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, we have three line item expenses for a Casey Pender. One is in the amount of $43.11. The other one is for $45.21. And the final expense line item is $24.63, which brings a sum total of $112.95, counsel. So I would like to ask for a motion that we approve that total of $112.95 for Casey Pender. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the license application, we have an application for an on-premise beer license, an on-premise wine license, and an on-premise whiskey and wine license submitted by Alonso Clyde for Mayor Tuck, LLC, doing business as Bama Q, located at 1006 B 16th Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama. This is the second reading. Due to the fact of it being a second reading, I would not ask the clerk to reread it. And at this time, counsel, I'd like to call for a motion for approval. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the license application, we have an application for an off-premise whiskey and wine license retail packaging store submitted by, and if I pronounce this person's name wrong, if they are viewing this, please forgive me, submitted by Hanasha M. K. Patel for Shav, for Shav Shata Food, LLC, doing business as Shata Package Store, located at 3858 Highway 80 West, Unit C, Phoenix City, Alabama. This is the first reading. With that said, I would like to call upon the clerk for this first reading. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. This letter is from the police chief. I have reviewed this application for off-premise whiskey wine retail package store license, and I have no objection to the issuance of this license to the applicant based upon his criminal background investigation. The next letter is from the building official. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Hanasha K. Patel for Shav Hakati.
She also asked for your forgiveness, too.
Package store located at 3858 Highway 80 West, Unit C, for off-premise whiskey wine retail package store. An inspection was conducted May the 10th, 2018. This facility meets the building code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of this license. The last letter is from the fire chief. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Hanasha K. Patel for Shav Hakati Food, LLC, doing business as Hakati Package Store. Pardon me if I mispronounced that wrong. Located at 3858 Highway 80 West, Unit C. Mr. Patel has applied for off-premise whiskey wine license retail package store. An inspection for fire code requirements was conducted on May the 11th, 2018, and was observed as meeting fire code requirements for this type occupants.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve, ma'am.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordon. Okay? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to call our city attorney, Jimmy Brand. Mr. Brand?
Rob had this thing way he could sing. Mayor and council, we have two claims on the agenda today. One is a notice of claim filed by Ken Newt, Law Firm, on behalf of Matilde L. Lavanas Franco. Ms. Franco was involved in an automobile accident with a city vehicle. You got the memorandum from our department head saying that we were at fault. And I'm asking y'all to give me the authority to try and negotiate a settlement with this client.
Okay. Counsel, we all have heard the recommendation, recommendation of our attorney as far as him asking for the request and kind of negotiate. So with that said, I'd like to call for a motion to approve this recommendation. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Okay? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next claim is filed by the Fund of Earth Law Firm on behalf of Nancy Bell. Ms. Bell is alleged that back on November the 11th, 2017, a police officer responded to her home and harassed her and caused her to have all these medical bills and pain and suffering and mental anguish. In the memorandum that the chief wrote, he couldn't find where a officer responded to her house on the 11th, but there was one on October 28th. Neither date really makes any difference because we have statute in the state of Alabama that requires that you file a claim, a notice of claim, within six months from the date of the incident. And this woman did not. The claim was signed on May the 17th, and the last date to file the claim would have been, we didn't get it until May the 21st. She actually signed the claim on the 17th. Either date is outside of the six months. So my recommendation is to deny the claim based on that.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the attorney's recommendation. May I ask for a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey.
Can you get the chief, though, to
Yeah.
tell what he said yesterday in the work session, that there was still an investigation done? We don't just take something because it's beyond the legal limits. We gonna follow the law and what's right and wrong.
That's right. Right. This complaint, even though she stated it was on the wrong date, we did confirm that she did file a complaint. We did work an investigation. We attempted to try to validate her complaint. However, she quit cooperating with the investigation when it was discovered that we had body camera footage that she, we wanted her to review. She wouldn't review the footage with the deputy chief, and therefore, we closed the case as unsubstantiated, which means that we could not prove it, but we couldn't disprove it either because the witness failed to cooperate.
Correct.
Thank you, chief. Thank you. As Mr. Bailey says, we are going to do the right thing, and we're gonna do the right thing the first time. So we absolutely appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. So at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, city manager, anything?
Yes, sir, I got a need. Just like to, city council, put a copy of our annual water policy report. The report will go out in our water bills for all of our citizens. If a citizen lives in an apartment complex or something and doesn't receive a copy of this, they are available in the lobby or in the clerk's office for anybody to review.
Is it on the website?
It will be posted on the website, yes, sir. And it is an annual report that we're required to follow. I would point out that we do have a, one, it has all the detail in it of all the testing requirements and shows that we're in complete compliance and everything. We did have one minor noncompliance issue that's reported in here. We test our waters on a regular basis, and we FedEx those, the test samples[1451.53]